If I didn't put an X on next to my name.
X marks the flag.
My name is Bob Warsburg. I live in Providence. I've got two, two comments. First of all, I'd like to say that the historical markers, I'd like to vote that they're very valuable for new, new people who have moved into the community. My wife and I have been here just over four years and we've been around to see the, the signs and look at the areas and, and it's a way to get adjusted to the community. So I like that.
Thank you.
The other thing is I, I would like to know if it's possible to have a, a warning sign southbound on 850 East in all these neighborhoods, just as it starts to turn downhill. Mayor may not know that last year there was a, a car that just went straight through that stop sign and nearly went through someone's garage, but actually ended up in between two houses and then hit the fence at the back of the yard. Had one wheel over an eight foot retaining wall. And it'd be nice to have something just say slow down for slip break or when it's icy or whatever. I know that they should be driving 25 or less, but that's not often the case. And so I, if there's a way to put a sign up there, just kind of let people know, you know, if it's slick, maybe I'll start slowing down now. Thank you.
Do you think it would be helpful to put like, you know, those yellow diamonds, how about stop ahead at the top of the curb before you come to the stop sign?
Um.
I don't know if that's what it could be.
That, that might be something with flashing solar flashes.
We can take a look at it. Rob and I can take a look.
It's, it's normally cloud and sand. It's, you know, fairly early in the process, but it just happened to be a quick car that came through. It was really cold and it was right between my house and my neighbor's house. And it was, it goes straight through the stop sign. It goes straight through the stop sign. It would have been a different scratch. We avoided that. So anyway, just, just a thought.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll take a look at.
Cheryl. My name is Cheryl Eames. I live in Providence. I had a discussion via text with my cousin this morning and one of the things we commented to each other was we are commanded to love everyone, but we can choose whom we like. I want to tell you that I like you all very much. But I'd like to read my comments and I'll do a copy of it to you after I'm finished because I've been very, very careful what I have to say. And I've quoted from minutes of some public meetings and that's annotated in the notes that I'm, and the remarks I'm going to give to you. I would like to read from or summarize the minutes of two recent meetings. The city council meeting held October 19th, 2022, and the planning and zoning meeting held on September 14th, 2022. There were 12 speakers at the public hearing held by the city council on October 19th, 2022. 11 of the 12 spoke against single family high zoning for the proposed annexation of the North Chubb property. One even suggested we kept agricultural. At the same meeting, council member Nepica asked council members what they thought of the comments that were made that night during the public hearing. It did not appear to me that any of you answered his question. A council member did say, however, in referring to the earlier public hearings need help by planning and zoning, that most people at that public hearing were okay with the 74 law plan. That may be true of the planning and zoning commission members. It was not true of the citizens in attendance. At the planning and zoning public hearing on September 14th, Gary Wilkinson advocated single family medium for the area. Jim Brackner recommended a medium density development for the area. Ruth Nielsen recommended a medium density home for the area. As did Joanne Arnold, who also reminded the commission about the results of the referendum, which was finally voted on last fall. In addition, Barbara Moon sent an excellent, well-searched email urging a single family medium zone. She ascertained that 74 homes, as you could have allowed, are 11 more homes than a single family medium zone. The zone that is overwhelmingly favored by Providence citizens. Kevin Moon also sent an email. Now back to the minutes of the city council meeting held on October 19th. A council member commented and concurred that most people who attended Vineyard's booth at the city celebration were okay with the 74 law plan. Another council member stated that the changes and compromises that have been made by all the parties to come to this 74 law plan seems to be okay with the majority of the city. Considering, considering the comparison of what was said at two public hearings and what was gleaned from the Vineyard's booth at the city celebration or from reaching out to residents or listening to the issues and concerns that are brought to you. I'm extremely interested in what you consider to be the role of a public hearing. In order to give you time to think about it, would each of you prepare for your next meeting an explanation of what you consider to be the role of a public hearing?
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay. Anyone else to speak? Okay, I, I will close that. I'll close that portion of the meeting and go to item number two. We have on the Zoom call, Stewie, Ryan?
Yes.
We have Cameron Olson, who is our auditor from ACOG Miles and Associates. A CPA firm that will present the city, to the city council their findings and recommendations for their audit. The Providence City Council will review, discuss, and may take action on approving the city's annual audit review. So Cameron, you're on.
Yeah. Can everyone hear me?
No one can hear you.
It's working before it started.
Say something.
Okay. It's working. Hello?
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay. Are we there?
Yep.
Okay. So we completed the audit last mon, I guess last month. Everything, first of all, kind of just tell you some of the things that we do is we look at all the different, you know, internal controls, if internal controls of the city are, you know, in compliance and everyone's doing their job to safeguard and protect the, the assets of the city and, and they were. Everything looked really good that way. There's always a couple of minor recommendations that we have and, and, you know, each year when we came back from that all for implemented. And so that was really good. But just kind of going through the report that we, we have, if, if we'll just hit a couple of pages. If you want to go to page 19. I think I saw Ryan handing out the, the audit report.
Yes, we have it.
I'll just give you a minute there when you're, when you're there. And if you have any questions at any time, just, you know, obviously just speak up. On page 19, the first section there is the general fund. And you can see your, your revenues at the top. In, in revenues last year, property tax revenues was 1.2 million. And you can see your, your revenues at the top. In, in revenues last year, property tax revenues was one point two million. Sales tax revenues were one point seven million. And you don't see that there, but I just kind of noted it down. Your sales tax revenue in the previous fiscal year was one million four hundred and seventy-five thousand. So you saw, you know, a nice increase there in your sales tax revenues in, in two thousand twenty-two. Other taxes, you know, franchise transit tax was nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. And just kind of jumping a few lines down, charges for services was one million one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And then of course, down there at the bottom, you had another big one was miscellaneous revenue of five hundred and seventy-six thousand. And that one was so large because of the donation that the city received in, in two thousand twenty-two. So total revenues of six million three hundred and fifty-two thousand. And that is up from the previous year by about five, five hundred thousand. You don't see that number there, but it was up five hundred thousand. Any questions with revenues in the general fund? Hey, looking at expenditures, total general government was one point three million, with public safety was one point six. Then your smaller categories was the highway, parks and cemetery. So total expenditures of four million one hundred and ninety-six thousand. And if you take those minus your revenues, you see that bolded number down below that is two million one hundred and fifty-five thousand. And then other financing sources, you have impact fees of three hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty. And there were some transfers in and out. In this case, they, they came out and they, it was two million three hundred and sixteen thousand. That's going to the capital projects. So much you see that column over to the right. And, and you know, just the transfer of money to keep everything state compliance. So total net change in fund balance for the general fund was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-three. Any questions there? Okay. We won't go through the capital projects fund. There's a little note that has that. Maybe if you can flip your pages over to page twenty-three. We can just kind of spend a brief minute just looking at your, some of your enterprise funds for your, your water systems. And of course, now the fiber network as well. Okay, so page twenty-three, total operating income for the year was one million four hundred and twenty-three thousand. And in your culinary water fund, your operating expenses was eight hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-one in total. Your repairs and maintenance this year, just kind of like to give you a heads up kind of on that one. Cause it, it goes up and down and last, this last year was two hundred and sixteen thousand. The year before you were a hundred and seventy-one thousand, so pretty close to same, which is good to see. So net operating income in the, in the culinary water was five hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and thirty-two. And then you have your non-operating income and expenses and they net to a hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and sixty. So you had a positive income before everything in culinary water of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. Wastewater, total operating income was one point three million and that's up from last year. It was a, it was one point one million in the previous year. So that one went up. And then your, your treatment cost is the big one, obviously in the wastewater, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand in expenses. So your total operating expense is one million one hundred and nineteen thousand and seven hundred and sixty-two thousand of that is, you know, obviously the treatment. We won't hit any of the others. You have your impact fees down below. Looking at your stormwater fund, that's pretty small. The income before contributions was fifty-five thousand. At, you know, that's that bolded line that's fourth from the bottom or third from the bottom. That's the change that you had. Fiber network fund had a, a little bit of activity this year. The biggest activity it had was your capital contributions, your, your grant money that you received from ARPA. And if you look up from the fourth line from the bottom, you can see that amount. That's four hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and eighty-four. And so that's kind of sums up the activity that you had with your enterprise funds. Any, any questions or anything anyone has with that? Okay. Just jumping down to the report, one area just kind of like to hit is just to kind of see, if you can go to page thirty-six. This will just kind of look at the changes in capital assets for the year. It doesn't give us detail. Obviously it's highly summarized, but you can kind of just see some of the activity that took place. So this is looking at the, you know, your governmental funds, your, your general fund and your capital projects fund. Just the change in activity that you have in those funds for the year. And so looking at the top there, land rights. One million one hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And that was, most of that was land. Well, it is land that you had with the park. And then construction in progress, the additional construction progress that you had with some roadway and, you know, cemetery and that was one million eighty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-nine. And then down below, you see the, the changes in, in machinery and equipment and as well as improvements in other buildings. Machinery and equipment was a big one, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and five. And then forty-nine thousand, you know, that was retired during the year. And the third section looks at your accumulated depreciation. So just kind of summarize, summarizes that activity. And the next page does the same and probably won't go through it, but it does the same for your, your, you know, business funds, which are your culinary water. The big activity on that one, as you can see on page thirty-seven, was the construction in progress that took place during the year that you had of three point five million and, and in additions. And, you know, just the various projects you had going on with the reservoir and things like that. So. Page thirty-eight, that takes a look at your long-term debt, the changes you had in long-term debt. And just the payment of your, of your, of your loans there. No additions this year. You can see the reductions. There was, you paid off a two thousand one water revenue bond. And then you also paid the fifty-three thousand. And so you began the year with nine point eight million in long-term debt and ended the year with nine point six, almost nine point seven million. And just below that, you can see your payments coming in the future when that twenty twenty-one sales tax revenue bond kicks in, or the payments do. You can see that in twenty twenty-five when your, your payments jump up to two hundred and ninety-five thousand. Any questions? You know, at the beginning, there's obviously a report that we state that this represents the, the financial position of the city and, and the, and obviously it did, is, is a, a clean opinion. We also look at state compliance requirements in addition. And we didn't have any findings in the ones we're required to, to, to look at. There was one state compliance, kind of just giving heads up as, as the state changes their requirements from year to year. We, we gave a little head up on that one. So I think you said, I think everything looked really good. No findings with, with either of those. And with, and with the state, no findings with the state compliance. Everyone was really good to work with and got the information to us that we needed. Both, you know, through email and when we were there on site. So great audit. Any, any questions, I guess?
I had one, maybe you can answer Ryan. I was wondering about the market decrease in net operating income for the culinary water fund this year compared to last year. I was curious if that water conservation related at all?
If you remember, we were lowered rates in our culinary water. We lowered the, the base rate.
Okay, so that, that, that's the primary cause for that one.
Did, did that answer your question there?
It did. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Sometimes it's hard to remember all those meetings that we had, the things that we did to help connect the financial statement. But I thought financial statement like that didn't look right, but yeah, I do remember changing that. So thank you.
Okay.
Good catch. Cameron, thank you. This is the kind of audit that we like to see as a city council. It seems like city is doing well. Means that our, our city staff are, are doing a great job. Appreciate Ryan's work he's done. And we also have won an award on a state level.
The, the national budget award, not necessarily audit, but on, on the budget. Connect to the financials.
We appreciate that. Do we need a vote to accept this?
Yeah, we vote to, to accept and approve it.
I will initiate a motion.
I'd make a motion that we accept the audit.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Bye-bye. Motion, Carrie. Okay, we'll now move to public hearing. The first one is slide three. Providence City Council will take comments and questions on proposed amendments to the Providence City Code five dash one dash twenty-two. Be public nuisance prohibitive and PCC five dash one dash twenty-nine, lad or offensive animal penalty. Amendment seeks to comply with House Bill two oh two, changing criminal penalties for animal violations from a class C misdemeanor to an infraction. Some tie in your, maybe if you could give us a brief explanation?
Yeah, so the state in their last session just passed this bill. The reason why we're just seeing it now is because during the session, we were going through our codification, so we thought just be better to wait to do this. Since we contract with the sheriff's office, they're already doing it. So basically this is just kind of a cleanup. What this does is take, as you can see in our ordinance change from misdemeanor, class C, to infraction, which is a non-criminal offense. There's different guidelines. Right now with it being a class C, there's possible jail time, possible probation. It goes on someone's criminal history. With the state changing it to an infraction, it negates that. There's no jail time. There's no probation. It doesn't go on your criminal history. The fine, I believe, is lowered a bit, but we comply with the Utah uniform fine schedule, so we don't have to worry about that. Like I mentioned, our, our officers are, are already doing that. Since I've been here, I've probably seen maybe two or three come through the courts. So we don't, we don't get a lot. But again, this ordinance will just help us comply with the public statements passed. Any questions?
Okay. Do we have any comments on this from the public? Do we have any online? If I can begin, there wasn't any three minutes ago.
No online comments regarding.
Great. So we'll, we'll close public comment number three and go to the public comment number four, Providence City Bike Lane Improvement and Routes. Providence City Council will take comments and questions regarding bike lane improvements and routes for the approved twenty twenty transportation master plan. So do you want to pull that map up? And like to invite anyone who would like to make comments about this item.
Do you mind to just give you a summary of what got us to where we're at?
Yeah.
Inside of our, let's just pull that here. So if anybody doesn't have or hasn't been to see our master plan, if you can go to our website under transparency, master plans. We have for our general plan, one of those. So as six key initiatives listed in our general plan. Sense of place, green infrastructure, fiscal responsibility, multimodal city, economic development and various housing opportunities. Those are six that we have. We have various objectives underneath each one of those. But as we build each of our plans, our master plans, we reference back to the general plan and try to incorporate. So the general plan was adopted in two thousand twenty. And so then we went and we had a transportation master plan done. And as well as a trails master plan, but this is, this is really from the transportation master plan. It identified different buffered bike lanes. And then by an engineer with a lot of public feedback and, and that it identified different areas. We, we took this because of its size. We kind of tried to condense down a base and said, okay, you know, we have a lot here. How can we take and boil this down into, into what our first steps are to get that, to implement the plan? That brought us to an application to kind of have the routes that were east and west and north and south to try to connect pieces of that puzzle in the first step. We were awarded the grant. It has started in its design. And, and we have some of that kind of the design here. We've had this out for public comment. And we wanted to be able to, to gain additional public comment as it came. And so there is, there is bike lanes here. And then as well, there would be a path through Zollinger Park that would connect to Gateway Drive and eventually would connect in to Macy's there. But at this point, so this is a bike lane. We, we have looked at the street widths. And, and Providence has a thirty, thirty-foot standard for residential and a thirty-seven foot for minor collector. And so we've looked at, at which ones were possible. Our engineer looked at that and have kind of drawn out where the, where it's at. We did get some comment early on that's going straight up center street. Maybe a, a tough ride. And so we've added the, the extra side around to kind of help facilitate that. And when you look at it, when the engineer looked at it from a flat perspective, I'm sure that was true. And so a few modifications are certainly within that range. And at, at this point, the grant and the funding is from an air quality grant. So there is some, some restrictions on, on that it's supposed to connect, you know, laterally and, and connect this to other cities. But we recognize and we've heard some comments on recreational side and we appreciate, there is more to this plan. This is just where we're seeing our first step and, and in, in the implementation of the plans. And, and so we said, you know, before we go too much farther in, in actual construction, we wanted to put it out one more time for, for some public feedback and see what, what we might have and what we could change in. And hopefully some of that feedback is, is both on our first step and maybe what the second step of accomplishing this, this larger plan may help us with. So anyway, that's kind of where, where it takes. And we'll gather this feedback, take it back to our engineers and, and help them to, to guide to the next steps. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at.
We're eating nails at one bite at a time.
One bite at a time.
Hey, anyone would like to make comment, what you've just heard?
I'm Joe Maria Ochella. I'm a new resident of Providence, almost two months. I personally object. My home is on eight fifty. Halfway in the middle. And I object to not being allowed to park in front of my own home. It's been twenty minutes, months since we broke ground, two months since we were received off the state. Yet no time during that phase. Did we ever receive notification from the city, either through the permit process? Or, you know, mail, excuse me, seal mail or whatever, or email. Never did we receive notification until we got your handy dandy newsletter two days ago. Okay? I personally object to a process where
Notification of what?
Of that you're doing this and you're going to quote, no parking through the blue line. Which is eight hundred east, nine hundred east, eight fifty east. So basically from the Mormon church up into the whole circle through Sherwood. So if I have a family member who wants to come and visit us. They have to park either at the Mormon church. As you have it now, up on nine hundred east or down off of Sherwood Drive. So basically a quarter to half a mile to a mile trek up and downhill. For them to come to visit me. It's not gonna happen. If I want to have a car club come and to my home. You know, you can't have all those cars down in other residential streets. It's not sort of those residents. So on Monday, we received in the utility bill, your handy dandy newsletter. So I've organized my, went door to door to my neighbors and let them know, and a couple of them are here tonight, so that they can give you their perspective. I called your city manager and spoke with him. To come to find out that no study has even been done to determine the number of bicycles. So you may be spending tens of thousands of dollars to stripe these lanes, to stripe the curves. Or as if today was one example, I sat out there for four hours, one bicycle. Do you really want to be spending that kind of money for one bicycle a day? Now granted. Statistically not significant, because I only sat there for four hours. And in cold weather. Okay, so I will grant you those objections. Besides that, I object to only being given two days to try to organize my neighbors. It's really difficult for you to hear a consensus of what we as residents want, if you only give us two days. From the time you send out the newsletter to when you're meeting it. You need to have to set another hearing. So I want to refer to this map if you wouldn't mind. Can you blow that man just a little bit for me?
Where do you want me to blow it up? You, you near spot?
This portion here? So. I live, no, down, yeah, good, good. So make it a little smaller, just a little smaller, okay? So I live here. Now, the one place that if you've driven that road that is extremely narrow is right here where the Mormon church is. Yet that's where they're going to plan to put the shared road. Right now, Sunday mornings, if you go down there and drive by, cars parked on both sides of that road. And bike, and if you have a bicyclist, where's the regular car supposed to go? I've been down there on Sunday mornings and it is very difficult for the construction trucks to get through there. If you add a bike lane, if you're not putting no parking zone there, guess what? It's not gonna work. So that's the part where you need to put the no parking zone. Okay, on both sides of that street. Okay, very, very narrow. So the other place
I'm gonna give you about another minute.
Okay, the other place is the cul-de-sac here. Notice this is green. It's a shared road again. That's where you need to put a no parking zone. We need to keep the drug dealers out of there. Yet I know that that's a problem, because that's where a lot of cars will come up and leave the bikers off to get access to the trail. But we as residents want to impede that drug activity and drug transactions that are going there almost on a nightly basis. Okay, so my request is straightforward. One, a final decision not be made until after formal notification of all of the owners. Meaning people who actually own the land or have gotten written notification from the city that there's going to be a hearing. And you allow more than two days for us to organize. Two, you eliminate the no parking zones on eight hundred and fifty east. And three, change the shared roads on nine hundred east and on eight hundred south to be no parking zone. Thank you.
You want to say it? I'll get up. No problem.
I'll get, I'll get up to the right, gonna follow you.
Hi, my name's Carrie Green. I'm in Providence. I have been a resident since August and I live on eight fifty east. I have been coming up to Providence and my ancestors grew up here and started up in the Cache Valley, so it's nice to be home. And to be with my, my children and my grandchildren. While I, I do applaud the city for this plan to improve the, provide bicycle paths. I am an avid, or try to be a cyclist. I'm not very good. But I can tell you right now that if I were riding my bike and trying to going up the hills like it was mentioned on Center Street, it would be very difficult. I would not be able to make it up those hills up to eight fifty east. There is no way. That you couldn't make drive, maybe one out of a hundred were able to ride their bike up that hill without stopping or going slow or getting up and walking. I myself would get off and call my wife to say, come get me, because it is so steep, okay? But I do think that it is a unfortunate situation where this plan has indicated that these paths will not allow parking on residential streets. Those should be shared. Those bike paths will not be used that often. And people who live in the residence, as my neighbor mentioned, will have people coming over and wanting to park. And you can't have family over with enough parking in your, in your driveway to accommodate that. And that, and it would really be an unfortunate situation where people could not come and park. Or if they did park, they would get a ticket or somebody would complain or something like that. I think there's, there are viable options that would allow parking on these streets. If you were to close both sides, which right now that's the plan, to make no parking on those streets for, for over a mile. That would be an unfortunate accident waiting to happen. And I recommend that the council and the planning commission seriously look at these situations, especially in residential areas. There should be shared space for bi- bicycles. But you, you should not adversely affect the residents of these areas. Everybody should be happy with these bicycle paths, because it is, it is a great opportunity to have these come forward. But let's all work together to make a good plan for, for everybody and not just for the plan. And there were one or two bicycles that tried to go up that hill. Thank you.
Can I make a couple of clarifications to help? Just so that people understand what the share row is, because the road is so narrow. It will fit two-way traffic, but because it wa- isn't wide enough to allow two-way traffic and a separated bike lane. A share row is a shared lane between bike and because of the width of the road. Isn't wide enough to allow a, a painted bike lane. So those roads that are narrow, we can't put that one. So that's, that's what share is, is shared.
They'll have a painted share.
It'll have a painted share as far as on the, on the road, it will show to the to the vehicle drivers that there is also, that this is also a bike path. But it won't have its own bike lane because of the, because of the width of the road. Another one is, is it's, this is about striping. So there are some roads that are wide enough to be able to stripe a parking and stripe a bike lane with your also lanes. So this is about how the, how the road will be striped, not necessarily, we're not talking enforcement, we're not talking, you know, heavy hammer. This is the, this is how the road striping plan is, is striped. And so at that point, just keep in mind, I think those hopefully clarifying. I don't mean to, I don't mean to get on your step. I just, anyway, I hope that clarifies that this is, these are striping plans. We're not, we're not taking out our red paint and painting every curb in town. That's not our design. This is, this is a striping, a, a striping plan and how the striping is. So you'll see on Third South, it's, it's Third South. Fifth South, Fifth South is really wide in that section and we could allow, but anyway, I think that's.
You got blown up. Is that?
That's Third South. No, I think, I think this is Third South and through that section. What's that?
Can you talk about the no parking on the side of there?
So at this point, because we, let's say we take a thirty-seven foot road.
Okay, so the thirty-seven foot road is wider.
But yeah, they're wider. The thirty, so thirty-seven foot, if we take eight and a half feet, which is the standard width of the car or eight, eight to eight and a half is the, usually a park strip. So you take out that. And if you take thirty-seven minus eight and a half on both sides. You're left with twenty left, which is the requirement of a fire engine and isn't enough to, to house or to, to facilitate two-lane traffic, because each lane is generally a twelve-foot lane. So at this point, most streets don't, don't have enough width to be able to pot, to paint. Parking on, on the roadway. For instance, we have First East by the elementary school, which has angled parking. Three lanes of traffic, the right, center and, and left. And then parallel parking on the other. That can fit. And then we could, I mean, if that was on the plan to do, we could potentially put bike lanes inside the parking and fit all of those in that wide of a road. So these are, this is a, this is a striping plan for the most part. So I hope that's helpful and clarification, but it, it, it does, I mean, it's indicating that there's no parking, because we're not painting parking in any of those streets. And, and it would be, if you parked on there, you would be parking in the bike lane. So, yeah. Sorry.
That, that makes me have to think on the fly, which is
I'm sorry.
Yeah, really, right, um. So I guess
We need to have you state your name.
I'm sorry, yeah, John Roberts. And I, I live up on one seventy-one, eight fifty east, so I'm a, a resident up there too. I've, I've had the lot for about five years. We've had toxicity for about a year. Born and raised in Logan, so I got a real passion around the valley. Spent my whole youth running around up there. So I know people love it or hate it. I, I love it and, and hate myself always, you know, I'll, I'm all the emotions for that. But I, it, it's a great community, great street, all that stuff, and I'm proud to be a citizen here. But that, that does, that kind of gets, so it's not taken away, definitely I respect the wishes of my neighbors here as well. It's just interesting to me so that it's
You need to use the mic, because if, if people that are gonna listen to this online won't be able to hear.
I know, but if so the spacing is kind of weird. It's not a, it's not a legally enforced no parking zone kind of deal. I mean, it's striping. To me, that's like a, a taken a step that direction. I don't mean to make that a question and answer series, but you brought up some clarification here, so I wanted to address that. Because it, it almost, to me, as a resident, and, and I, I actually I'll state my original part of my thoughts here. I'm an avid biker, I've biked my whole life, mountain bike. That's part of the thing that drew me up there. I do make it up the hills, but small turtles can pass me. Going so slow, like ladies and strollers, not no fancy, just strollers will pass me, but it, it is really steep up that hill. But I might, I work from home. I, I, my office outlooks that. I've creeped on the area forever, lived there for a year. Literally, we got the notice and all this in my office days, I've taken a little more formal of a study. And during my course of observation, the only bike I've seen go up through that street is mine with me on it. Very rarely, rarely do we see bikes, but I, I'm an advocate of bike lanes, I'm a, a advocate of trails and bike paths. I think that's all great. But it does concern me as a resident there that have a guess that there would be an issue with my guest parking on the street. And to me, it seems like it makes more sense if it's if it's that wide to be able to accommodate, a- and the traffic is really light. Once the construction is gone, the traffic is relatively light. There's not a lot of traffic there to block off both sides of the, is it both sides of the street then?
I believe it is.
And it, it's just, it seems really extreme to me to make that where you can't park in front of our, our house on such a, a small residential street that's up on the hill and a stretch of road where there's it, it out, that if there's any regulation, it should be the speed of the drivers and the, the use of the, the little cul-de-sac up there. I couldn't agree with you more, Joe. But the, it seems like a shared space would make more sense there. Where a car could park there, a bike could go around. I, I can't even imagine a situation where that would be hard to negotiate. If there's a challenge there, I'd challenge the ability of the biker more than the road. And I got all my thoughts, Graham. I only have one more minute here. No, I guess that, that's pretty much it. This is the, the way that reads for a no parking to be placed in front of the house. This seems really extreme for, for that street based on the, the amount of use that would happen. I think, I appreciate Joe's comments around the, the expense of the whole deal. To me, it just makes sense, especially for that upper stretch, to where you, you should have no problem parking in front of your house if you wanted to. And any kind of bike traffic, that would get deeply and safely negotiate that. But I, I wouldn't want to have any hard line restrictions to park even in front of my house. So that's my, the right, you got it.
I, I had a question there if I can. If you had a section of that that would change from, if you had a section of that that you would change from painted bike lane to share, which is a shared lane. Would you tell me what stretch that could be? I mean, I, I think those are changes. I understand. You're, you're the, you're the one at the podium, so I was asking the question. So anyway, I just, I think that would be helpful for, for us. That's things we could change in this, in this part of the process. That's something well within. Or if it's the stretch and we're not ready for that stretch to, to proceed, it adds the loop. And but if it's not, we can, we can reduce off from that. Anyway, I just was curious if that.
Yeah, that, that's a great question, and I pondered that and looked, and I think it's something to consider. Again, like I said, I think there's viable options. I don't know what they all are at this point. But if you look at the way that, that road is built and the way the houses sit, the ones on the west side are closer to the road. Where you have more people coming to stay and they park on the street. People who, in homes that live are on the east side, they have a long driveway where it could accommodate more of the traffic or like that. But again, I don't know if that's the best solution, where the east side could be more of a no, no parking and the, and the west side not be a no parking zone, just as a i- idea. But again, like I said, there's got to be options to accommodate the bike path with the regulations you want to put in, to put in there to protect the bikers. The one biker makes it up the
And the turtles.
And the turtles, but
And the strollers.
Think there's also, uh, we don't want to Think there's also, uh we don't want to um err on that side at the expense of the residents and then and the visitors. Because and I really the road down at the bottom by the church is barely a s- a s- a a single lane road. And when you're coming down there, I've been on the road coming down by that church and I've been in the dirt when other cars are coming in the opposite direction because it is so narrow. And that needs to be taken into consideration. Either that road needs to be widened or whatever, but that is a dangerous stretch. And if you're putting bikes on that road, something's gonna happen. And I see all the time where bikes are on the sidewalks, which we know they're not supposed to be on the sidewalk. They they get in the way of pedestrians, all like that. But there's got to be an option to look at. So thanks for bringing that up. I didn't say anything illegal, I said it's an issue. It is.
Yeah, so that, you know, my my interest is right there.
It does and 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 I think to the point, I mean, that's what we're looking for is is if it makes sense on one side and and a share on the other. You know, that's it's what we're looking for. Um I would say any questions from the council because there's not a council action item to this. I mean, this is the discussion.
Yeah, I do have some questions.
So.
Well, if anyone else wants to make comments.
I'll put closure to this real quick for me. Just feel free, you've got my number. I put a comment in that thing too online. But I I would, I think many of us people aren't happy with any kind of viable options.
And this is the beginning of the process for this. And so if there are some suggestions, recommendations, other ways to do it, those should be brought forward.
Yep, the the comment period is through the end of the month. Um so there is a comment period and and a and some that we can take through that. So it's not it's not all are done today. You have more comments?
I've got one, it's just a little different. So yeah, I don't live all the way up there. I live on the where it turns.
Tell us your name.
Jim Roberts, sorry. I'm the only guy I ever see go up the road is my brother. I can't make it, I've tried.
This turn here?
Oh, okay. Anyway. So to have it go up that steep part is really a waste of effort, I think. Because nobody can make it up there. I've tried. My brother can make it. He's the only one holding that can make it up there. I think the bigger concern is where I live, I've lost four mailboxes in four years because people can't make that turn. And I've been told by the city manager that they can not control tr- traffic on that street if they go as fast as one. We can't put in a stop sign, we can't put in a speed dip, we can't do anything. People are allowed to go up there as fast. I think to put a bike lane to add to people that can't even miss a mailbox is ridiculous. And if you put, you know, one of these days somebody's gonna get killed, they're gonna hit a tree. And I've also been told by the sheriff when he came up, because my fence got paved out too. I said, well, you know, kids park there. Get off the bus here, walk up these sidewalks. And he says, well, you ought to just keep the kids in the backyard. I thought, how ridiculous is that? And when I bring that up, I just get totally ignored. But I think the speed on that road, Barbie, something, and it can be handled. Be told it can't be, it was ridiculous. There can be a stop sign, a speed bump, we're done with that lane. And but that needs to be handled way before you start worrying about putting bike lanes up there, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Could you tell me again where exactly your house is?
What?
Where is your house?
Right next to that is five sixty eighty seven. Right where they look on their cell phone instead of at the road. Right below.
Stima and Abbey.
Right below Abbey.
As I've gone around that curve, I've thought. Permanent.
I I can say.
Make it up concrete.
If if they had to stop at Abbey or something, that'd slow them down before they, you know, it'd make them think. But I've been told that can't happen. But it's ridiculous. And and people don't look at those lines. Those people cut as straight as they can, but that road, there's no point in even having a center line. You know, because they either totally miss them or they go on the other side of the road. So anyway, thank you.
Jim, I have, uh I live on three sixteen East Center and have a stop sign. It doesn't work.
Well, I know.
But they do hesitate a minute, but they don't stop. But they do, they do hesitate, so maybe that maybe we ought to put up a hesitate sign.
Like you never do and we learned this over, because I was on the board of Sweetwater. Because people can't reach on, they just ignore them. We put in some concrete waterway dips, by hell, they slow down those.
Nibbly has them.
And they they both can't do that. But that would work, that would slow them down. It's worked on my street at Fair Lake, my country club way, and that brings them right to a halt. And so.
The second time they'll slow them, first time they'll hit it.
They'll slow down, they'll hit the first one pretty fast, they know the second, third, fourth are coming, and they slow right way down. And that saved about five kids' lives, I think, up there. And I think the same thing is gonna happen on Center Street. So thank you.
Bob Washburn again, Providence. Um I was the first resident in Little Malibu. And I've been there for years. And there are a lot of bikes that come up there in the summer, now November, it kind of slows down a little bit. And with electric bikes, electric assist bikes, there are a lot more of those that can make it up hill. On Spring Creek Parkway, that it it's these guys traverse that road back and forth as they're going up. So they're they're using the entire road with their bikes to get up that road. And uh the the other thing is you've got eight, nine, ten-year-olds on these little scooters, electric scooters, and they're all over the road, not paying lick of attention to any kind of signs. And uh, you know, those are my safety concerns. Uh another two two thoughts that might be considered is parking only on one side of the road instead of having parking on both sides. Or ha- the best option, I think, is to to create on the on the east side of the road a a real bike lane, just painted with the lines, so you're going this way or this way. So so you have a twelve-foot lane for for biking that that's totally not on the street. It's a nice safety feature. I've seen that work very well in places like that too. Anyway, there there are a lot of bikes, there's a lot of traffic and a lot of traffic that's that's totally uncontrolled. Besides besides the the ATVs with five kids on there and their drivers talking to the person behind them. You know, it's just like insane. Yeah, yeah. And and no helmets. No safety. You know, I had to pull over to the side of the road so that they could, I wasn't gonna be an object they were gonna hit in the middle of. So anyway, it's uh there there are some issues with with that up there. Uh making it so people can't park in front of their houses probably is that, I guess.
Thank you. Okay, any further comments? Okay, beginning of the process, everyone knows that. So we're willing to take additional information. Study that, that's why we have public hearings.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you have a question, right?
Well, uh with this being on the agenda, I traveled several streets in Logan City to see what they have done. And not all streets uh are wide enough to facilitate a bike lane. But where it's been wide enough, they have facilitated some bike lanes. And they've done some creative things. You'll notice on some of the streets, there's a bike lane on one side with no parking. And then they've moved the center line of the road over. And that goes around a lot here on uh First East. And then you have parking on the east side of the road. And uh that creates a safe space for the bikers. Sometimes when it narrows down on Tenth North, Tenth North way up high up by the uh Hill Press School, it's narrow in spots and they've brought it in and shared the lane. And where it's been wider, they've allowed some parking. And they've been creative. They haven't set a hard, fast rule of any street other than try to be creative to allow bikers to share the road where they have to, have a bike lane where it's possible and where the road's wide enough to give parking. And you know, if we took uh and gave parking of eight and a half or so feet on, say, the west side, move the center line of the road to the east, you'd still have twenty-nine and a half feet and you could have a shared bike lane coming and going north and south, and you'd be able to share that with the traffic because you'd still have fourteen-foot lanes in which the bikers and the cars could share that lane and still have parking on the inside. So I think we can be creative and we don't have to draw a line in the sand. Say this is the way it's going to be. I think we need to work with you, be creative, and come up with some solutions that are creative and we can work together to do it.
Yeah, I just had a quick quick comment. I know you want to have a discussion. I um I would actually like to, so we did get a copy of all the comments that were made uh to the, I'm not sure if everybody who spoke has actually made one. Your phone numbers did come in with that. I I I don't think it'd be the only council member who'd probably actually like to have your phone numbers and contact you and learn a little bit more. Maybe just a quick phone call to have more of a conversation about your area. Um if you haven't filled that in, I'd just ask you maybe just quickly fill them, put your phone number. Because I I'd like to at least contact you. A lot of issues are brought up. I didn't know we had a potential drug problem, by the way, in in progress, so that was new. Um you know, so that, you know, you just kind of picked up with that one.
I'm sure the staff does every day.
Yeah, so but um.
Some things are political, some things are legal and not politics.
I guess my point is it would be nice, it'd be nice to follow up with you. I personally, the council, feel like we've heard a lot about this area before and traffic and transportation. And um I'm actually kind of thinking maybe we need to just think about it and study the whole thing quite a bit because there's there's a lot of related issues. Um and they they seem to continually come up. So that's just kind of how I'm feeling. But I'd like to hear from the residents and if you feel up for it, I'll, you know, shoot you a text message. Quick phone call while we're driving down the highway or something. Yeah.
Not paying attention on your phone?
Yeah.
Is that, that's kind of, okay. All right, um no further comments? I can I just put a plug in for the Parks Trails and Recreation Master Plan and for the Transportation Master Plan? Um I I know this has taken some by surprise when it came out in the newsletter, but the Parks Trails and Recreation Master Plan came out two years ago and had public hearings. And and this is part of it. And I believe in compromise and I think we should should figure out something better. But also it's part of the Transportation Master Plan and there were engineers that worked on all of those and there were public hearings. And so it's not just something that we threw out a week ago into the newsletter, but it's something that we've been working on for for years, actually. And so um so it it so it's it may be new to you, but but it's been there. And if you ever want to look at those things and see what's in the plan for the next ten or fifteen or twenty years, you can. And then and then there'll be less surprises.
Let me make a comment then. And why, when you got us in the permit process, why didn't somebody say, oh, you're not gonna be able to park in front of your home? We're going to stripe that red and therefore I would have moved my house back further so I could have gotten all seventeen of my cars into the driveway.
You have seventeen cars?
Yes. Oh, I only have a four-car garage, they're all in a warehouse. But if I want to bring them up for a car club meeting, I want them all there. Okay, so point taken. If you had told me during the permit.
I'm sorry, I that's I I just was going to point that out to you for future reference. So and and it's it's. It's the um responsibility of residents to look at those master plans and to know what's coming into their areas. I'm sorry that that was not pointed out to you.
It it would be in the development process, but she's right. It's not necessarily in the building permit process that some of that happens. But in the development process, we do show the impacts of a master plan when the developer comes in to set and build a road. But but to her point, it's probably not on the on the building permit because we contract that out with with Cash County. They do a lot of the building permit process. Um but it would have, I mean, in every development that has come in the last two years, every development has been aware of where the trails on those plans and how each of those plans affect that development. Um so there is some of that.
And it's available to citizens on the website and that will be more navigable soon.
I just want to say that um I don't think any citizen wants to be told that their visitors can't park in front of their home. So I'm.
Well, this is the beginning.
I know, I'm just just an amount of thought there.
This is the beginning of the process.
My visitors are gonna park in front of my home.
Stick with it, we'll see what.
You've got a long driveway, so.
I think, Ken.
Okay, so no more public comments. Okay, we'll close um that portion and we'll move on to item number five. This is the ordinance or the annual control. Um this is the time that the big council can discuss that particular item, although it's something done by the by the legislature and we're just cleaning up our code. So I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve item number five, ordinance zero nine dash twenty twenty-two. Okay, need a second? A second, no. Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? We appreciate Ty's um putting this together, um making that, making our code clean so that we keep that done. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any further special carries? Um item number six, uh Providence City Water Conservation Plan. The Providence City Council considers for adoption a resolution approving a city water conservation plan.
Water Conservation Plan is a living document that we update, try to keep up dated um yearly, but a required doc- document by the state. And so by state code, we follow those guidelines of ours, submitting a new report every five years to them to be reviewed. We've already had our initial rough draft, feedback, feedback and comments. Uh we updated our plan to meet those new desired regulations in that plan. And luckily, we did the the water master plan this last year, so which helped me with the the data aspect in a big way this year. So um other than that, there's some good information in there and it's a living document for the state that's due at the end of next month.
Okay.
If you've got it, if you've had time to read it and digest it, great, you've got comments, I'll take those. You can call me anytime.
Water is important. We appreciate your taking care of it. We know that water is a a big part of your job, so thank you. And I'll entertain a motion. Can you put the motion on there?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Uh I'll make a motion that we approved Resolution zero seven dash twenty twenty-two Providence City Water Conservation Plan.
I'll say good night.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just want to tell Rob, thanks, this is great job.
Yeah, Rob, thank you.
That's really good job.
Okay, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Those special carries. We move on to item number seven. Providence City Council review, discuss and may take to action on a resolution of Robert Hankey to the Providence City Planning Commission. So would you like to come up, Robert, and introduce yourself to the council? Most of them know you, I'm sure.
Hello, how are you doing? I'm Robert Hankey and I do live in Providence. And I think I sent you some information.
Yeah, and they all, they've all had a copy of it.
Okay, so I don't know if you have any questions. I'm happy to serve the city and be a part of that and learn. I don't have experience with that in particular. My, I'm retired now. Um I was an educator, uh finished up this transport vision high school a few years ago. And then gone out of town in Mexico where they use speed bumps a lot.
You can give anywhere.
Sometimes you don't. Sometimes you don't figure out how far is the place you gotta go, how many speed bumps are we gonna cross? And usually the first one is the worst one and there's always oil on things because somebody bought them up, but anyway.
Pieces of parts of.
I don't know if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I'm just always thankful for people who are willing to serve on the planning commission and, and it, I read your resume and it. Looks like you've had a life of service and a life of compromise and talking to people and dealing with people and, and um, and that's what planning commission is about. It's about caring and, and figuring out the best plan possible for the city. So I'm excited to have you serve endlessly.
I'm excited to be here.
I want to echo that, I'm glad to serve. I just, I wrote down a few questions. It's like, what do you see our challenges as we grow and? Um, what would you like to see happen in Providence? I, I think you've been here forty years, is that right? Thirty-eight?
Yeah, a long time.
Um.
We moved once. Block. Would you like, but. Uh, I think you've talked about some of the challenges today, like uh, I've never tried, I don't think I've ever tried biking all the way up St. Street.
Invest on an electric bike.
I rode, I don't have one, but I rode one once. I laughed out loud when I took the car. But uh, I, I think there are challenges uh with growth. I think there's challenges with uh transportation. Um, and um, with the air quality and Cache Valley. Um, I think there's challenges with affordable housing, for sure. So, um, you had two questions. That was the other one. Oh, what would I like to see? Well, one thing I do remember, um, it's four or five years ago, they had a, a meeting. And they had some presentations on, on what to do like behind Macy's in that area. And we were gone for three years and came back and it's all townhouses and condominiums. Um, but I think, and, and one of the suggestions was that there be an area that the community can get together. And uh. Eat, visit, maybe a playground for kids and uh just a, a gathering place. Instead of going to Logan or whatever, so maybe an outdoor space or something. Anyway, I'd like to see some of that. Um, instead of just a whole bunch of businesses lined up along the main drag. But a place, a family place, right? There's a place actually in uh. Nuevo Casa Grande, Mexico. My wife and I used to go and eat when we were in that area and it was just, there's a playground, there's grass, there's restaurants and other businesses. And the kids playing and it was just relaxing. It was enjoyable. We like to do that. I think it'd be nice to have that opportunity.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I will. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we accept resolution, um, got to get the right one here. Um, zero one three dash two zero two two to accept uh Robert Hankey as a uh. Is it an alternate?
He would be an alternate.
An alternate on the planning commission.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any further? Motion carries. Well, welcome to the team. Okay, we'll close that, um, resolution and move on. To resolution zero one four dash two zero three two, Providence City Council Review Discuss and May Take Action. On the resolution appointing Mary Ann Hankey to the Providence City Historic Preservation Commission. Now I received your statement.
My long statement. Um, I'm Mary Ann Hankey and I also lived here thirty-eight years. Um, I don't really know what would be required of me, but I'm willing to serve and I feel like. Um, the historic, the history of our community is really important. It's important to pass on to our children. It provides us with community feeling and that's, I'm glad to serve and get involved, so.
We're happy to have you.
We like that, people who, who are willing to be here.
And one of the cool things about the historic committee is this kind of what you make of it, like it's. There's, there's a lot of leeway in your creativity and how you can help to preserve the history of Providence. So that's, that's exciting to be able to, to, to do what interests you.
I already heard that um it's a class of importance, so I guess I'd.
Any other questions?
I'm just say, gonna say they're talking some fun things. They're getting, there's a big painting with a link here and possibly some flags down the wall. We've got a good group in there.
I just think it's, uh, I was thinking that um, you, you kind of inspired me when I'm retired, maybe I can get my, my spouse together and we can decide on the side we want to do next. I, I think that's really nice. Thanks for the personal example.
I think that's great. For the two of you to present space.
Well, thank you for the invitation.
Okay, um, I'll make a, can I make a motion? Yeah, thank you. We won't make her stand there long, but we'll do it. I'll make a motion that we. Adopt resolution zero one four twenty twenty and appoint, I think it's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry. Don't go back to. Mary Ann Hankey to the Providence City Historic Preservation Commission. Okay, I have a motion on the table?
I'll second that.
Second. Any further discussion?
If it's an alternate or is it a petition? Cause I think to give the point, we need some permission members.
It, it starts as an alternate until um, another one comes off. But several of them have reached their term limits and, but rather than just whitewashing the whole committee. We're trying to add to it as it goes to the.
We've been training, the whole JP.
Totally hope your feet are fire. We'll give you a minute to try to.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Who's? Well, welcome, both of you. Thank you. You're welcome to stay and if you got the rest of the meeting with us or, or you're welcome to exit if you need to. So we'll go on to item number nine. Cooking here. This is the ordinance um zero eight dash two oh two two, amending PCC. Ten dash four dash one zoning district established, the Providence City Council Review Discuss and May Take Action. On ordinance to amend the city code. Ten dash four dash one zoning district established, ordinance seek to amend some of the names of the zoning districts. And their accompanying abbreviations. So Ryan and Scarlett, Ty and a bunch of other people have worked. To um, look at what we have versus what the other cities and counties in this area. Have that use a more descriptive type of a, a zone name. And so we decided based on feedback that it was time for us to. Make recommendations for something that is more in line with what everyone thinks. So, Ryan, you want to take the lead?
Sure, um, I think that was a good intro into it. Um, we're taking up uh words that are subjective. Um, like uh large, medium, high. Um, uh, in planning commission, I, I related it and said, you know, you can go into a store and you can buy a, a small, medium or large drink. Um, and you can go into various stores and, and large may be different in each one of those. Um, and if you go to seven eleven, it's a big ol' instead of, you know, small, medium, large, it's a big ol' for a double big ol' for whatever it is.
Need some samples to make sense.
I could have, like, we, we got, we got, we got, we'll get you covered. Um, but this was more not, not about changing the actual definition inside, so nothing. The detail, the, the detail of what that zone is, is still there. Um, but this is just kind of the name. Um, when you look at residential districts and you read um, a rural or a residential district R one twenty. And you see that's a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. When you recognize that, then you start, then you can easily recognize the others of a residential district. R one twelve, uh, R one ten, R one eight, R one six. It, it becomes very easy to distinguish what those are. Um, they're similar to what we have in other, other cities around us in the county. For residential district, one unit per six thousand square feet for an R one six. Uh, so the extra description at the bottom was, was a um, thing that came up with planning commission to help. Um, to show, to kind of give a, a better indication of what it was and readability. Um, so we like that adding it in. Um, so this is to make sure that we're. Like, like Mayor said, consistent. Um, we're not changing any densities here. This, that's not what this is. It's not changing the setbacks or any of the other details within each of these districts. It's just to try to use a com- a more common terminology or, or items so they can be interpreted the same. Um, whether that's developers, the developers will know theirs, but, but that's residents. We talked, we heard, heard today from several residents. That this may have been their first city council meeting and um, and, and they're new to our community. But if we have a similar language for them as they come in, then they interpret that and, and can understand what zoning they're in. As they come and, and that's the, the real crux and intent of, of what this is, is trying to accomplish and. Um, like she said, Ty, uh, Scarlett and I all, all have worked on that and, and lots of the planning commission, Bob's here, that, that was part of the planning. Um, anyway, that's kind of what this is looking at and trying to accomplish, so.
Scarlett, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that covers it really well. It's, um, I, I had to laugh. At some of the comments. Well, I had a smile inside. I didn't laugh. I feel bad. I. But inside I was thinking, goodness gracious. Um, because when, twenty-five years ago or whenever it was that the planning commission went away from using ours. And the city and recommended descriptive. Um, we got a lot of feedback and actually some of it was from the same people. They gave us feedback that they didn't like. We were going the other way. So it's just interesting um, about change. But nothing in, the only thing that is changing is the name, like Ri- Ryan said, and I think that's really important. For, for people to remember. Um. Our M eighteen is still eighteen units. Per net acre, just like single fam, or excuse me, multi-family high was. So, um, and I was sitting in a meeting today and. With Logan City was, had people at the meeting and Nibley City had people at the meeting and. We were talking about densities and the Nibley uh city manager said, I have to. To chuckle when you guys are talking about densities, cause high density for us is six units an acre. And high density in Logan is extremely high compared to our eighteen units an acre. So, so. Ryan's analogy of small, medium and large is really a good analogy because what is high density to Providence City is. Out of the ballpark for. A Nibley and it is. More like medium in, in Logan. So this is a good thing to, to be a little bit. Um, more clear in the number of units or the size of lot rather than large lots. So.
Sorry, do I add anything?
No.
Great. Thank you. Um. So. This has been through several reviews and taking comments. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance zero eight dash twenty twenty-two, amending PCC ten four ones over the districts as, established.
Okay, we have a motion to accept. For a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? I have a few thoughts. Okay.
Um, I was curious about the R, R one, the residence, the rural residential. I, it might have been rural at one point. But I don't think it's rural anymore for the estate, estate district is. So I wondered, I know for consistency, like you've done it by the unit and the lot size, if you just like. R one forty-four, that's, I, I mean, that's a rounding, it's not an exact number where the other ones are exact to square feet. Um, or just say R one one, because it's in the further description there that it's a one acre, but it's not square feet. That was one idea. And the other was to add um, to the mix zone, like we did with the LCR. We put the range of the, the, the density on LCR with four to twelve. Per net acre and to add that into the mix, the twenty-five to thirty-three.
That, that's how many units can be in a, how many residential units?
Residential units in mixed use.
I agree.
Twenty-five to thirty-three.
Both of those suggestions.
I had a comment too, if I may add one. Um. I thought we did away with moving the districts.
It's required to have a place so you can have them. We don't cur- I don't believe we have current zoning for any there. But we do have to have an ability to do that. So they're not used, but it's, it's in the code to have.
Okay, I personally don't see that it really needs to be changed because MHD almost goes if somebody's thinking multi-hiding. If they still read, in their mind, they're still thinking the previous code. And where SMH. Uh, is what it was. I, I don't know if that needs to be changed. That's just my thoughts on that.
Can we just call it the MH? Can we just call it MH? Oh, knowing that we're never gonna use it.
You know, that wa- that was brought up in the planning commission, whether you put district on or didn't. And you kind of said the three letter was there and, and Bob, I don't really remember that conversation, but it was just kind of a. Whether you have the district on them or not. So, but yeah, that's something that came up in the discussion of planning commission. Some do and, and we didn't, it would just kind of, when there's only two letters, there's lots of things when it's three. So, anyway, that did come up. Um. So, but they eventually just passed it this way, but, or recommended this way, but I think we can go, we can make those modifications, whatever you, whatever you like on that.
I don't feel super passionate about the MHD one mainly because it's just.
Oh, I don't know if that's a lot of the mobile home unit honestly existing with a home. That's on first base and. There's more. I don't, it just.
Do we have to make an amendment to somebody's motion? So you would have to amend your motion.
Well, anybody can amend the motion. If he has a motion in a second, he can make an amendment to that.
Make a motion to amend the motion. Does anybody have thoughts about the ideas we're prepping for?
I like your agents.
I think they're fine. We amend the zoning district to. Well, how do you want to change the rural residential?
R one one.
I like R one one.
Okay, so, so should it be residential district R one one?
R one forty-four, is that what you said?
Yeah, one or the other. Well, I, that might be problematic because it's not exactly forty-four thousand square feet. It's forty-three five hundred, but. I do R one one, R one one?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, to strike rural, the residential district R one, R dash one dash one. And to add to the mix. Um. Zone, twenty-five dash thirty-three. And do you want changes made to the mobile district?
It's not a big issue. It's just, I don't care. It's not a big issue. It's just, I don't care.
It's not seldom used and all you have to do is do the MHD and the definition is right there. Make both amendments.
I'll second your amendment.
Okay. So any further comments? We have a motion in a second. So now I would take a vote on that motion.
On the amendment.
You take two votes on the amendment.
So I'll take the. The vote on the amendment, so. Hi, Aver.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we go to, back to the original motion.
No, it's amended.
This has been amended. And if there's no further discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Um, we're going to go to item number ten. Resolution zero one six dash two, zero two two, modern income housing strategies amendment. From the city council review discussed, I may take action on resolution regarding a proposal. To amend the wording of strategies listed in six point three of the modern income housing elements. Of the Providence City general plan. Twenty twenty to be consistent with the requirements of UCA ten dash nine A dash four zero three. To be. What's that, Judy? Aye, aye, aye. And UCA ten. Dash nine A dash four zero three, the, the number two. So Scarlett, is there anything you want to add to this? We've been over it. I just, we just need a vote on it. It's kind of a hybrid thing, um, because of the way the state code is now. Um. The things that Ryan and I had, had learned during the summer, um, we thought that our general plan has written with. Pass, that we, I could reference everything in the general plan and it would work. However, the people that are reviewing the general plan didn't agree with that. They wanted it more specific with the wording very specific to the, the code that is in place now. Not similar, but very specific. And so what we did is we took our existing general plan. We looked at the, how we thought the similarities worked and we put those together. So there. It's a wording change. I tried really hard not to change the integrity of the existing general plan. But it is a wording change that put us in compliance with state code. Um, we went from quite a few strategies down to, um, seven or eight. And I put it in a format that's a little bit different from the rest of the, the general plan. But the way this, um, needed to be written. I tried doing it to be consistent with the way we, we had it, where we had objective strategies once. Five years and five to fifteen years. That really just didn't work out. Because we needed to talk about our, our plan a little bit more. And so that's why it now talks about the objectives, the strategies, the input, the. Implementation plan and the timeline. And honestly, we're doing most of what. They want us to do. And so our timeline talks about things that we're already doing and things that we're, we're doing. Continue to do. So, so I'm happy to answer any questions. But I tried really hard, like I said, to preserve the integrity of that twenty twenty plan. Because I know how hard everyone worked on that twenty twenty plan when it came to the moderate income housing element. So that's what this is. And we do have a recommendation from the planning commission to accept. Yes. And I will tell you, we turned our report in and I wrote up something similar to this plan as an explanation. And you can see it if you go on our website. Um, and, because we had to have a re- a report to them by October first, this date. And the first person I talked to encouraged me to not do it because he said, it's not correct. We'll have to just tell you no. But we did it anyway. And we have not gotten a deficiency notice to date. So I'm thinking with my fingers crossed, I talked to Ryan. I'm really hoping that because it was this first go around, they are a little bit more lenient off of that and that they accepted our. Original report. But we needed to proceed with this change because if for some reason they didn't. We wouldn't have enough time to go through the whole thing and change it and still make the deadline for the deficiency. So that's kind of a little bit of a preemptive strike is what we're doing right now too. But, but we will be in conformance for next year with this change. Good. Thank you. Yep.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, as I was going down through this and I don't, and, and maybe it doesn't make any difference. But the red line that was entered in there on page four or five. It had the strategy and then it listed four oh three B. And it's actually four, I believe, four three two B. If we look at what we're changing in the, uh, resolution description. I think there's a two in there, Scarlett, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
And it looks like there's a.
It says four oh three.
For me.
Have two references. We'll check it and make sure, Brent, that it's consistent with state codes.
I looked up where it'd be on the code just because it, the one had a B, or two, two in it and the other did not.
Okay.
And I just was checking that. So you, just, and the one above it, the, it doesn't have a two in it either. So maybe it's okay the way it's written, but would you check that, please?
Yes, I'll make sure. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, council. Okay, so we need to make a motion of this for revolution zero one six dash twenty twenty two. Okay, we have a motion. Second, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Thank you. Um. We're on i- item number eleven, Providence City Public Workshop Building. The addition that Providence City will review discuss. May take action on a quote contract and or plan for the city to move forward with adding a building to the public works department.
So in the budget, we have approved a, uh, the addition of a new city shop building. To house a, a few pieces of equipment to ten we were in, a vac truck that won't currently fit. Um, no one is, uh, arrived and one, we're still in the process of building, um, as far as equipment. Um, but we need to, to expand. We have approved the, in the budget for that expansion. Um, but as we looked and we started to get a contractor, um, the funds weren't enough in the budget to, to do that. Um, and, uh, so at this point, as I look at what the number was, but, but the, the. Um, what we're looking for is not necessarily a, a budget change at this point. Because we don't know that the cost will be incurred until after the new budget year. Um, but what we would like to do is enter into a contract so that we can get started in that, um, process. And, uh, the, the quote range that we're at is three hundred and thirty thousand. Um, to build that. Um, and it does exceed, but it is one of those needs that we, we had identified. It's not a, not a change in, you know, identifying it. We've known, we knew it was coming. Um, but the price of steel has gone up, um, in concrete and, and, um, just in that inflation. So it takes it up to that, that range. Uh, we do have contracted quote, uh, that's within that three hundred and thirty thousand. Um, to build onto that. Um, it does bill, it is a forty by eighty. Um, size and it would go east of the current buildings that are there. So it would be one more to the east. And you would enter from the north and south. Anything you want to add to that?
That's one item. So when we discussed this before, it was to more or less approve the deficiencies that we're at. Because of our vector and our ten winner issues, and those types of equipment have gotten longer in overall length. Our group shop just doesn't make it. Um, so trying, trying to house those two pieces of important equipment with goal. Costs obviously went up lately and looking at the cost of a forty by fifty or forty by sixty. The incremental to gain the amount of space that you can gain by not having regrets, by making it so it could house. Four pieces of equipment, not two for a, a cost differential there that. Grant, Grant probably understands better than I do, but it, we went from like one sixty to two thirty in a, in a twenty foot span. And so those, that's where we're kind of thinking we don't want to have regrets when it comes to building right shop. To have even potentially garbage trucks.
That's why I moved my mic a little close. I was gonna ask about garbage trucks. That was that best way.
Hold on tight.
What's the plan for the, so if, if it's built, it's kind of like removing and putting it into that, it could open up space or it's just additional?
Yeah, it could open up where the current vector is. Um, we could have.
Learn plans for that.
So.
So we would, I mean, we, our town is growing, our fleet is growing, our personnel is growing. Kind of takes real factors and some of that stuff, but overall, we, we have a lot of stuff currently parked outdoors. Away. So it's, it's very well needed space.
If there was a garbage truck, we might be able to fit a couple of those at some point at that.
How long do you think will satisfy your needs?
And those garbage out.
Well, to say that worst case scenario, if you get a garbage truck, if you do deal with that, we'll be whole.
Yeah, if we get garbage truck details, we will definitely, we will definitely. We might be looking at something else as well, but for the space that we have. Maximizing the authority to park equipment in that location will, this design. Pretty much uses up that entire space. So we couldn't really fill much bigger than what we've got.
You're talking about land wise.
Lakewise, lake bandwidth behind the.
Behind that.
Behind, because it was shed back there.
So that's about all the station's got. To put in a forty by eighty.
Correct.
So there's no room to expand it.
Not at that.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
Not at that key rotation.
And will you, you will heat that?
Correct.
And, uh, are you gonna put in drains and stuff like that, dumps, or you're gonna, what are you gonna do?
We'll probably have to add on to the land drain slash storm drain system that we did a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Back through there, but, um, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be going all the way to the hillside. And there's still, still be some room for pipe and stuff that would be.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, I just thought, if that's, if that's all the land we got, I guess that's all the land. But I just wanted to make sure that while we're doing it. And, but, you know, going north and south, your expansion is, because I would think your pitch is going to be east and west.
We've got two different plans actually showing kind of an L shape there. North and south, which will inch it east and west.
Yeah. I just, you know, if we're gonna do it, I'm, I'm just wondering. Is it worth it? If we had the land, is it worth it going anymore? Are we locking ourselves in? Do we have the ability to expand that shed if we need to? That's just some thoughts. I'd like to see you get.
That's kind of, and where the thought, this whole thing started was the fact that the previous shop was built. You know, designed that didn't allow for expansion on it. And so we didn't want to have that regret again. That's why going north and south. The eight doors have exits, entries to be able to pass through the garage. Having back out all the time. Kind of makes sense as well and always said it for. Or like if they remove the green waste facility or move it or something, it's good.
Okay, I, I just hope we're getting, you know, and maybe budget wise, land wise, it's all we can do right now. But let's, you know, I'd like to see if there's much, if you need it, you're gonna go.
My question is for Ryan. Ryan, if, if we were to prove this, since like it ended on here in a quote. Tie it to a quote number or put a budget cap on it or something or?
Yeah, and, and at some point, when we come back to approve the budget. Um, because you'll have to, we'll have to approve a change in budget. And that number will update when the budget is approved and when we start. Um, but three hundred and thirty thousand is, is the cap that we are, we're looking to, to, to have at this point. We're moving, we're looking to move to that cap, um, at the three hundred and thirty thousand.
So the cap is already there.
That is what, that is the cap that we're asking to, the, um, proceed with. I think the actual number of the, we're, we're trying to get, what I don't want to do is lock into the dollar amount. Because we're trying to negotiate that down.
Yeah.
So anyways, that's what I'm trying to.
So are you asking if to put a number in?
I'm, I'm wondering if it's sensible for us with cap. It seems sensible if we're making a change to just go ahead and approve with the cap.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thanks. With that, all entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve item number eleven, Providence City Public Works Shop, a di- um, building addition with the, um. Quote cap for that item of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Hey, motion carries. Cooking. Um, we come to staff reports now. Um. Let's start with public works. Trying to get Ryan now.
Well, he, he's all is open.
Yeah, so anyway, but I appreciate if, if that noise sidetracked. I, I tried to keep that.
I was hoping Ryan could go first.
So anyway, we'll, we'll let the, Rob, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
Well, which is going great so far, far as snow power, it all goes. That, that one's helping important times. So that's been great. Our, our public works, which like, you know, most by item budgets, we did well in time. So I have a budget going there. Projects are coming along, their sales coming along. Overall, good experience. The improvement that we've made there. Other projects, Fivers got a whole lot of progress lately and the weather definitely helped hit some of these. Long stretches of the roadway work accomplished. So that's been great. Um, I guess on a quick side note related to our partnership with Free Creek Fish Company. I've got some preliminary thoughts, numbers that I'll kind of throw out, just put there in my head. So recently, um, our, our beneficial use and share, shares usage. Has equated to probably an eighty million gallon that we were able to beneficially use. Waters that Providence came and that probably equated to roughly. These are approximate rounded numbers. So give me that off my head, but probably about twenty-four hundred hours. With the pump and motor saving. So now just, I don't know what that equates to with the numbers. I'm trying, Ryan, I'll help you figure that out.
Fifty to sixty thousand dollars in, in costs. That's, it's pretty great.
It's, it's great, great. Especially learning pair on the motor. That equates to like. One hundred hours, hundred days or something worth it. Pump and motor use, but any efficiency is highly. Helping in those realms as well. It's great to see. That kind of downplay, I, to kind of put some other, I guess, water conservation aspects. Because they stopped, in twenty twenty, we were at, what was it, eight hundred forty-nine million gallons. Will be used to your problem for the course of the year. Last year, we're. Um, I want to say about. Seven, seven hundred ninety, ever take, million? And we're gonna bang in, I haven't done the math, but I'm, it's looking like we'll be at about that same realm this year as last year. Which is fifty-six million less than. Which is fifty six million less than twenty twenty year. So last year, we, you know, we had the drought stop, the conservation effort this year looks like it's on that same trend. Therefore, people are conserving and so we're. We've pumped a lot less water, I guess is the way to put that over the last two years.
And keeping.
Once we've added.
We, we've had quite a bit of growth over that time and still maintain, uh, the amount of water. So at that point. You can imagine if we continue to grow and bring more houses on off of, off of secondary onto culinary water. And, and maintain that, uh, level. That, that shows that we can maintain a lot, the, the growth or at least some growth in the future if we continue on that path. That's a. That's an amazing feat and, and great for the public. Uh, it's been great for, for, uh, the water department and, and our relationship with Spring Creek. We were, we're hoping for a hundred billion, eighty million is a, is huge what we want.
We ordered a good snow pack so you can add more.
Large department's doing great.
Thanks, Rob, for all your work. Tell your crews, thank you.
Thanks for getting that. We wrote them down there too. That's, that's great.
Our engineer, resident engineer here had some, there's not any hearing questions.
Um, please, I know it seems like the leaves are slow to drop this year. Is there anything that we can do to help? See up the leaves of the snow as they're coming down? I mean, I, I think to add it to just serve to see if people are willing to help clear out those storm, storm lines. Um, but I can't remember, we've talked about the back truck before. It doesn't suck leaves, does it?
Um, our current vector doesn't do leaves the way a local city does. Um, it could, but it's not really very efficient, that trip.
So it couldn't, it wouldn't.
We have another, we have another vehicle that sucks.
Yeah, we have a, what we call the Billy goat, which is a trailer vacuum that blows made for the back.
A lot of them are frozen in the ditch too.
Yeah, they've been fighting that, I don't know if you noticed, but that process definitely made that process difficult.
And, and just, uh, hundred thousand is great. The drive today is really nice. And I've had many residents that have expressed gratitude for a whole water treatment coming up. That's about them too.
A lot of work.
All right, one quick question. The, the fiber that's done in late season, like going in later now, that's been. The, the processes I've observed is they, they do that trench in the road. It's like they put some concrete or something similar, it looks like concrete in there. Then they come afterwards and zap it with, I just worded zap. It's seal coat. Can they, can that seal coat, they can do that anytime? I was worried about the timing of that.
It's got texture.
That's what I thought. I was worried about, there's a whole section that they did. I'm worried about water penetration and freezing interacting.
The concrete you're referring to is called global fill. And we use a little bit stronger strength global fills than most cities. Um, global fill aspect of especially in projects like this one. So hopefully it'll hold up to traffic and weather for like a duration of a winter to be able to.
Okay.
That mastic is what the deal is actually called. There's different types of mastic and that. That mastic, um, does need to be applied at about a forty plus.
So the stuff is unfinished. We're gonna, we're gonna check it in spring and hopefully it didn't, you know, didn't crumble, right?
Correct.
And the mastic actually like.
Forty degrees.
Forty degrees, right.
Has it had to stay that first? Well, we're getting into detail. Okay, you answered my main question. They won't be coming back.
So there might be some global fills trenches that don't have.
Definitely in the detail. Okay, thank you, Rob, so much. Tell your crew, thank you. In advance too for moving snow. Hopefully we're gonna get some of that. Okay, got it.
Just kind of a heads up, um, we're trying to get a jumpstart on overnight parking. And the way our ordinance reads now, it actually is in effect right now. It's in effect after the first measurable, twenty four hours after the first measurable snowfall or December first, whichever comes earlier. And since we've had snow that fell that stuck around, we meet the, the qualification of, of winter parking. So a coltman has been out, um, we're taking a little bit different approach this year. We had some door hangers, uh, made up. The cars that are parked in front of homes, we're gonna put those notices on their doors, not on the car door, but on the home door. To see if maybe we can get a little bit more, um, traction out of our notices. Putting them on the windshield. Sometimes I don't know if people didn't, if they blew off or what, but, but we're trying that and so. You may be getting some calls, because we're starting to get calls. We've also hit really hard. Um, people with still having trailers, vehicles, uh, parked in the right way. We're sending notices out. Um, to them, we're doing the same thing and we're getting quite a bit of response from people saying. That's really not my car. That's really not my trailer. It belongs to, and they let us know and then we're able to contact the appropriate owner. So. It is working. So we are trying really hard, um, on parking right now. We're, we're trying on other things too, dirt in the road and things like that. Um, but we are hitting parking quite hard with winter, snowstorms coming on us and, and trying to get people to, to get off the streets. So, um, I was gonna mention that during the discussion on earlier about parking, but I hope people understand. From now until April fifteenth, we do have a no parking on the street between midnight and six AM. And we do have the sheriff's deputies actively ticket for that. So, so just not just warning, they're ticketing. We do ask them to do that. They do give some warnings too, and that's what we're trying to do is give the warnings right now. Um, but anyway, so that's, that's where we're, we're moving and, and Colton is keeping an eye as well on stormwater. Um, problems and things like that so that we can work with property owners to make them be a little bit more responsible. To help us with those storm drains and, and gutters and keep them clean and stuff. So sending letters out on those kind of things too right now. So. He's working really diligently to stay on top of that. Um, our, um. Residential has slowed down a little bit, but we are getting, are interested in commercial. And so we'll have a few commercial buildings starting in the, in the near future. We're actually doing a site plan. For another building for discount higher. Um, and then we've got a couple others in the works that. Right now, we've made comments and they've got to get comments back to us and, but we are, we are working on that, but it has freed some time up. So we can do some housekeeping and, and do things like we just did tonight with the. Start with a simple ordinance changes and, and we're working on meat and potatoes and things like that now with. Use charts and, and whatnot to start getting ready for the planning commission. So we're going down that road. Um, just to echo a Carrie on the annual Christmas tree, this will be our fourth go around. And so please come and support the fun activity. It's a nice charitable event to be able to. We're going to stick with the family place. We thought maybe we would change, but, um, the, the. One that we talked to, actually they fund things in Box Elder and we felt like we wanted to stay in, in Cache County. With our donation, so we will stay with the family place. So the ornament, we had a donor that, that donated the money for the ornament. And so all of the proceeds from the ornaments will go towards the family place. So encourage people, they, we have them in stock right now. People can buy them right now. So encourage people to come and pick them up and. Their choice if they want to come back on that night and hang them on the tree or not. But anyway, it'll be a fun night. Um, and then I just want to take a second to wish y'all happy Thanksgiving and to thank you, the, um. Gift cards, the annual Thanksgiving gift cards. Thank you for funding that. I know that means a lot. To a lot of staff members. I had several come and thank me, um, and I want to pass that on to you and. And I thank you too. It's, thank you very much. Your, uh, pleasure to work with and for so. And thanks to Ryan too for keeping that in the budget for us.
Thanks. Thank you very much. For the, the hard work that they do and it's been nice to have somebody doing the compliance and helping us. Those are, those are a lot of our complaints. Our people who are not compliant and, and they. The people that complain to us about non-compliance. It's good for them to see that we're doing, taking some action. So, thank you.
Hi guys, I'm gonna follow up a question. Compliance, I did have, um, women reach out to me and asked about compliance that are all to tell for. Christmas trees, Christmas lights, and window washing, all those kinds of things. Um, the ornament says that has to be inside of the sidewalk, but. Do we care? Do we want to enforce it? Do we want to take it off the books? Do we want to, yeah, so like pull all those signs or what?
I can, I can have Colton start watching for those again. We just were, our priorities have just been on the. The meeting goals, the desert and all of that kind of stuff. So we can, we can start looking at that.
There's been a lot lately that, do they know where they're supposed to be, where they're.
We'll start without asking them and letting them, I don't know if they know or not. I, and it's hard to know. Who puts them out there. Sometimes they have people help them put them out there and they might know the rule, but it doesn't get passed on. So.
I know, I can be, I know about that rule.
Yeah, we try to educate them on those.
We do.
We kind of have lakes sometimes and walk around.
You, you pick them up or you call people?
Sometimes.
Okay, yeah, we, we try and not hurt somebody's business, but we also try and make sure they comply with our rules, so. So if we see them, do you want us to pick them up and bring them in? Then you can contact email. It'd be good better for you to get the email where we should, and they might be frozen in the ground.
And, and we don't want your. We, we don't want you to hit the KSL for pulling something.
Kind of helps. We appreciate that, but just let us know where they are. Okay, take care of them. Thank you. Please call in to the hotline, you guys. Thanks again. Thank you. Okay, bye.
Um, I don't have anything to report. It's already been reported, other than with Thanksgiving next week, the planning commission will be meeting the following Wednesday, the thirtieth. Your next meeting is December twenty first. Make sure that's okay with everyone. Um, so just let me know ahead of time.
The next city council?
Yeah.
It's the twenty first, December.
Need to change that the week before, the week after, whatever.
What about the historic commission?
They will be meeting in the first Wednesday in December.
The first Wednesday of December?
Yeah.
I'm saying that, but thank you. Okay. Ryan?
Couple of.
Give us a major announcement?
Yes, I will start with that. My daughter received her mission call today, um, and she is going to Manchester, New Hampshire Mission, uh, English speaking. And, uh, so that mission covers, uh, Vermont, New Hampshire and most of Maine. She'll enter the NCC in, in March. Anyway. She wanted the calls. She, she was ready to go to the cold war. It may never be worn.
We need to make a motion on that.
Well, congratulations.
At some point I plan to go back, but, uh, I've never been to Maine and she's dreamt of it all. Since fifth grade, she did a, she did a history project, she did a project on state of Maine. So she's loved, she wanted to go there. So anyway, um, anyway, thank you. I apologize for being distracted at that moment in time, but. Um, couple of things I'd like to show you here. That's why I stayed at the computer and I just wanted to show you. Um, there was an item that, that Carrie had, had talked about. Um, and, uh, and I, we've gone through, um, I've had some help with our staff. Um, to kind of give you a visual of what she was talking about. Um, the, the website is Action Strategy. Um, this is a way to show, um, what, what the objectives are and, and kind of visually show. Um, the, the different master plans and, and give it in one spot of, of objectives, uh, key initiatives. Uh, all of the different things. Um, she talked about it for, for goal setting, but I think it's kind of. Interesting to show you what the magnitude of the city is, is contemplating and working on and. And, uh, you know, we just keep this all in our heads, but, uh, we've, I've put, I've had it put down here. So you can kind of see inside of the, we'll close these up just to give you a overview. Inside of our general plan, uh, it has C six key initiatives. Sense of place, green infrastructure, fiscal responsibility, multimodal city, economic development and various housing opportunities. The general plan also includes under each one of those, um, uh, objectives. And, uh, and I have gone through and identified the resource to achieve that objective. And have gone through to show which ones our current focuses are on. And so as you can see, um, we have various different ones. I haven't gone through all of the ones to show the focus, but. You'll see the initiatives, which plans they're under and how the master plan. Uh, each of those master plans is integral to that, uh, general plan. And so then you can see each one as we go down, um, some that we're focusing on. Um, and then the idea would be is, as goals come, as, as Carrie had mentioned. Um, the, the goals would be which one of these, which one of the mass number of things inside of what we've approved, what, what the council's approved. Being the general plan and each of these various master plans, do you want to focus and make sure that we're getting those items accomplished? Um, and then we've put in the master plans and inside of each of these master plans. Um, we've indicated the different, uh, capital improvement items. Um, and so we've tried to list them in, in their order inside the plan. Um, and to kind of show, this would help us to show which one of those, uh, items of the plan have been accomplished. Uh, which ones are we're working on, uh, which ones we don't currently have a focus on, but, but at some point we'll get that focus. Um, and then this would, if we, if we choose to use this software and program. Then this would, would then tie back into that budget that we have, um, that puts it out five years and can kind of show which one we're focused on now. Which one we focused on later. Um, anyway, but you can see that there is a, a great magnitude of things that. As far as, um, items that we're, we're continuing, continually working on and trying to, uh, overlay each of those. So. Anyway, some more focus on some water runs. Um, and then we have a spot here for items. As we, as we have master plans and they are, um, you know, five to ten year models. Sometimes things get missed and, and we've found a spot that kind of says, hey, let's grab that, let's add that in. Um, and if that's our focus, um, then we're not, then we're not saying, okay, we'll, we'll wait. And we'll remember that seven years down the road. This gives us an opportunity to place that. Um, and be able to say, okay, you know, it's still, if not, maybe one that's i- identifying, but one we could certainly keep an eye on. Maybe we have a focus and maybe we just remember it for when we get to our master plan. Um, and as you've gone through all these different plans, um, anyway, that kind of gives an idea of, of how. That kind of all fits. Um, and Carrie, if you have any comments on that one, you kind of saw that at the league. Um, I don't know whether this matches what, what that was there, but then it gives you a, a, a great picture of what. All is, is out there and what, and we're working on different things in different areas. Um, regularly on, on our budget and our plans and, um, so anyway, any questions on this? And is it a tool that is helpful or not to, to you? We, we would give you a, um. Uh, an access that you could see the document and, and even to the point, we could get you so that there were updates. Uh, we don't want to get it down to the weed of every, every transaction on it. But it would give you just high level, what we're doing on those capital improvement items. So anyway, just a thought.
So it, it, I just feel like our goals for the last couple of years have just got added to the plate and that, and some of them have been so abstract, but. I won't use an example actually, um, just abstract, not really concrete goals. And, and then Ryan has to take those and try and do something with them. Um, but if we pull from the master plan, then it seems that have already been. Considered as priorities, then we can take what we're passionate about to help with and to serve on that committee and to, to over. to, to over, to, to help make it happen. Um and maybe even to bring it up in priority is appropriate, but um for me, this would give a lot of guidance.
I am a little bit confused personally, just because I feel like we made master plans, we have capital improvement plans. I feel like that's kind of what made me choose my goals the way that last year, is that it was things that I would be personally working on, not things that I would be passing on to staff towards them. Um.
That's the idea with it, but other people didn't use, didn't use the master plan as a guide for their goals. Like I haven't, I haven't opened the master plan to like choose my goals.
Well, I didn't either because I felt like the timeline was already set by the capital improvement schedule and plan inside the master plan. I don't know if my question makes sense.
It's, and, and maybe seeing it, um you know, as, as we've said there, it is a very high um review of what this is. Cheap software, it was a hundred dollars uh, uh for, per user. So it's not like it, it costs us much to be able to try out. So um if it doesn't help, um then that's totally cool. Um but I thought, you know, just to be able to see all of the different, all of the different projects and um anyway, I don't know whether, whether it'll help you with goals or whether it'll help you to, to know what the staff is, is, which projects we're working on. Um because then the next P, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, this is more real time. Where we're at was what we're going on, that we can see, not, because you can see it, you could understand it. But we as council and stuff like that, this gives us a chance to see it in real time.
Well, it pulls it down into a list instead of having it in a hundreds of pages.
Yeah, I think this is good. So I don't know about the goals though, because uh yeah, some goals may, may pale into some of this, but you know, there's some things and, and maybe you were looking at uh emergency preparedness. I mean, I don't know how that.
It's actually one of the, uh one of the initiatives that is, is worked on included, we've kind of got a spot that it works into that, so.
And I think there's much more that could be done with that. I, I'd like to expand emergency preparedness that it's in real time. If the person clicks on the little uh QR code and there's a disaster going on in the city, it's there. They know what's going on, where volunteerism needs to be and where you can go serve in, in real time.
Yeah, we're hoping our website will help us better in that, in that approach, but yeah.
I'd like to see more of that thing with that emergency preparedness myself. That's, that's just my thoughts.
I, I pray every night that we don't have an emergency.
We're gonna have one by Saturday morning. It's coming.
I understand. Um couple of other things, um you know, Rob's talked about the fiber status. Um they were, I suppose we're working on um uh different ways to market and get people to sign up. Um and, and we've, we've issued a survey. A, a lot of those have been responded to. Um they responded to that survey. We've tried to reach out to anybody that was there, uh answer questions that came up through it. Um it wasn't, um it wasn't anonymous and I don't think anybody thought it was because at that point we had the name, we had their email and we reached out if we could to try to answer questions and and have worked really hard on that. Um and so anyway, I think that's, that's gone well um for us to understand what people's um pickup is. Uh out of two hundred and forty that we had that, that could connect, that hadn't connected, um we probably got sixty five responses and, and we're able to reach out to most of those. Some concerns we can resolve and some people are just happy with what they have. Um and.
Has a take rate.
Um we have about fifty percent in our first one, we're both targeting our first zone. Um we haven't uh we haven't got far enough along to know a percentage of take rate in, in um in zone one. In zone two, we have about fifty percent take rate. Um which is great. We kind of predicted a thirty in that. Um so we're doing well. Um but we have a lot more installs to be able to come. Um and, and a lot more connections to be, to be made. Um a lot of the main line is in, in zone one. Uh almost all of the uh drops, um about ninety percent of crops are done in zone two. Um and we've done, we started a little um two eighty eight leg in, in zone uh five. Um and we've moved from there, um rather than completing zone five out. We've moved to zone three in order to get the pond cabinet in. So you'll see we're on Gateway Drive. Um but the pond cabinet, uh we may have to have a second pond cabinet, which will uh potentially add to the cost, but that's because number of users uh is, is probably higher than our um our initial expectation, which is good. Um and uh, but we're working on, we're working on that. We're working on improving our IT system um through our, through our uh water skater system. Uh so we're, we're making underlying improvements so that, so that some of those things um are proactive improvements rather than reactive. Uh and if we can do that, um we can avoid a lot of other headaches in the future. Um another one, uh the painting, I met with Gordon um and Rob, uh with the Astle, with the, yeah, with the Thorpe and Astle family. Um we're working on uh formula, relating uh contracts there. I think we had a very good discussion there. Um we're the planning process and engineering processes of getting our um twenty, twenty-three road improvement project designed. Um at this point, our current uh um current projection of roads, we would like to work on a Stonehenge, um which would be a um pulverizing place. We paved uh four hundred east, which could have put some widening. Um and uh we're hoping for Cherrywood, which would be another uh pulverize and pave, um the pulverizing and, and pave are when they have curb and gutter. So the bounds of the road are already defined. Um so anyway, those are the three different areas um we're trying to work on and get designs for. Um anyway, we're, we're working on other uh projects and I can work to what we can get ready for construction projects to occur um next, next spring and, and summer. Um so a lot of times um we've gone through grants and, and applications there and, and the designs now and construction starting spring and summer and we have kind of cycle that works that way. So anyway, any questions you have for me, anything I could help answer or solve for you?
I want to say thank you for all the effort you've put forth in getting grants and helping us finance things. You do a tremendous job. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And your finance business.
I think our audit.
In that budget and our.
In that spreadsheet.
I love it to, I love to have an audit presented. That can show you that your city is in a good financial condition while we have some debt. Um and, and that, um that, that is, is not weighing the city down to the point that it's not physically responsible. We have those that are specific for, for the project that it's back. We don't have any general debt that, that's not project specific. Um and at this point, we have no debt that, that we're not making more than PTI has for the, the wellness, the, the interest on. So um we have positive arbitrage in everyone. The two we have. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kentucky. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
To all the staff. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I forgot to mention a typo in resolution six. Can I just email it to Tyre? Does that need to be mentioned? It's just a, a word typo.
You'll just email it to Ty and I, that'd be great.
I'm gonna hit a motion. Our, oh, by the way, our next meeting, as Ty mentioned, is the twenty first of December. So mark your calendars. Try to get out of here by eight that night. We were trying to shoot for that. But at least it's not ten thirty, so. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
No motion, no second? Okay. All in favor?